We are.
Oh.
Being a school man?
Maria.
I'll try to put you through her name tag.
Okay, I got this part of it. All right, um, it is six o'clock, which is the appointed time for this to take place. I'm gonna call the city council, city manager work session meeting to order at six P M. I am asking that everybody in attendance, please, uh, do as I'm doing right now and put your phone on silent. And, uh, phasers on stun, so to speak. And, uh, remember tonight when we talked that, have make sure your mics turned on and facing you so that when you talk, you can be heard. Mr. Rivera?
Well, since he got all dressed up, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's rare.
He does look, he does look well put together tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
On your mark, get set, go.
Yeah, I'm ready. We're just pulling up the presentation. Uh, so tonight we have, uh, digital infrastructure on the agenda, kind of a work session. Um, since we have some new counselors in here who haven't heard previous updates on the work that uh, the city of Hermiston's been doing, I thought I would do a little more background um, tonight, but, uh, the basic idea is to kind of give you an update of where we're at, the work we've done, and then, uh, a new opportunity that, um, the city is looking to explore, so. And, uh, maybe set a path forward for us tonight. So like I said, give you a little background, some of the work the city has been doing over the last several years, um, an opportunity that, um, we, uh, feel like has some potential, um, that we would like to talk with you about and then potentially get some direction tonight. So since twenty twenty, um, the city of Hermiston staff, primarily Byron, myself, and some consultants have been working researching fiber broadband infrastructure options, um, primarily due to connectivity issues within the city of Hermiston. Um, initially, we started the conversation with city facilities, um, looking at what city facilities were connected and um, have arose from those. So currently, very few cities outside of the actual brick and mortar buildings are connected. Um, but the city has a vast infrastructure, wells, pump stations, lift stations, parks, things like that, that, um, we've identified that has value. Um, but currently, our city is provided by multiple providers over various types of infrastructure that has created some challenges for staff. So even before the pandemic, we knew broadband issues with availability, speed and reliability, um, were identified in the community. Um, primarily, that was word of mouth. People were always talking about, um, issues that we're having, but we hadn't gone through the prior these areas were, what the actual issues were. And so over the last five years, that's something that we've been working with. Um, then, once the pandemic did hit, um, we realized what, um, a valuable resource, digital infrastructure, and connectivity was to our community. And so this situation creates an opportunity for the city of Hermiston to potentially develop and deploy a more comprehensive solution for broadband access in the city. So city efforts. So we've had many discussions over the last ten years with many different providers. Um, unfortunately, the reality of this is, uh, we've had many promises and very few deliverables. Um, we keep getting promised, you know, um, even previously, the last time we talked, we had a new provider, Zippely Fiber, who had made stronger commitments, wanted to partner with the city with a co-location room. Um, we spent about a year of that, of staff time exploring the opportunities there. And at the end, it still was another promise that has yet to become a deliverable. And so we've withdrawn from those conversations with Zippely Fiber just because we could not come to an agreement or a situation that made sense for the city. And then also previously, we had looked at, um, exploring a regional option. You know, what if the west end of Umatilla County got together? Um, cities of Echo, Stanfield, Umatilla, and Hermiston, and the county and the outline region. And, um, it was a lot of interest. Um, everybody was interested, but very little to no traction. So everybody liked the idea, but no one was willing to do the heavy lifting part of the process. And so we explored it, looked at it, um, pursued those leads, and at the end of the day, we realized that this just really wasn't an area to put that type of energy and effort into. Um, in the meantime, the city continues to lag in digital connectivity. So the staff has been working with S N G, strategic networks groups. They've assisted us in strategic planning. As we looked at these issues, they've been a partner with us since the beginning. Um, the work they've created with us and the work we've done, it's kind of created a digital infrastructure opportunities and options, um, as we try to maximize any investment or efforts the city undertakes. So a little bit of background with S N G, they were founded in nineteen ninety-eight. Originally, we got tied in with them because they did the Oregon statewide broadband assessment and a best practices study. Um, so from that information, we've had conversations and we went into a partnership with them, um, undertook them as a contractor to help us understand the more complex issues of, um, building a network, what is involved in the network, the financing of a network, the cost, um, expenditures, what all goes into it. So they've been with us since the beginning of this effort, and we continue to work with them today. And part of that is community members, anchor tenants, um, and really tried to identify actually what Hermiston was interested in. From that, we came up with our top five goals. Um, what the community was asking from the city, um, things that we could pursue. So the biggest one was opportunity for work and economic growth. Um, I think we all agree that, um, access to digital infrastructure really promotes the opportunity for work and growth. Um, competitive broadband. Um, the city of Hermiston, based on where you live or your business is located, you can have up to five different providers. But through this process, we've also found areas in the community that have no providers. And so that was, uh, a disappointment for the last ten years. Online education, expanding that. Um, working with training opportunities, how can you maximize where you can do in-house training versus sending your staff, um, to the west side of the state to do training, education opportunities. Um, access to healthcare services, especially during the pandemic, we identified telehealth as being a major resource that could benefit, where people weren't feeling well, especially with the elderly, if they could have more access to telehealth opportunities. Um, and then monitoring management, clean water sanitation, all city services. So from that, we found, identified the issues and needs of our community. So, um, top five issues and needs were expanding local workforce skills, you know, oh, um, local business growth and innovation, and emergency response help. So when we looked at the connectivity of Hermiston, if you look at the most recent FCC data, this is the city of Hermiston overlay. So the FCC says that we are fully covered, and we're fully covered, um, with twenty-five-three up and download speeds within our community. Well, we knew that wasn't a fact. We knew that wasn't true. So we actually went through and actually did our own, um, research where we actually went and looked at our whole community, um, did speed tests, access tests, found out where the actual providers were. Uh, the darker the red on this map is, um, the low We certainly have a lot of areas that we can improve access within the city of Hermiston. And then we also did that with the speeds. Um, so these are the actual real locations where you got real-time speed data. And so we found that almost a third of household businesses do not meet the current standards. And then while we're in there, we also look to see if we can map low income, um, seniors, school-aged children, home business teleworkers. And we found the areas with the most need based on those demographics. So part of the process was instead of going with just community feedback of lack of connectivity, lack of options, um, things like that as were in our community. So the staff then, we looked at many, um, network ideas, private, public, private partnerships, strictly municipal-owned government entity processes. And we kind of decided and went down the path of exploring an open access network. So an open access network would be, the infrastructure would be city-owned. So the city would own the actual infrastructure. And, um, compared to all the business models that are currently operating within the city, a for-profit business model, this is an at-cost business model. So it changes, um, the economics significantly when you're looking to make a profit for a shareholder versus further and serve a little more, less dense areas within a community because you're not relying on that profit model. So the city would build the infrastructure, um, we kind of liken it to roads. So every home and business in the city of Hermiston has a road connected to it. While whether you have a car and drive on that roads, it doesn't matter, but if you don't have a road, access to your home or business is really difficult. So the open access model allows anyone to access these roads into the homes and businesses. We're only providing the infrastructure like the road. Third-party entities, investor-owned utilities, other partners would provide the actual services on these roads. Um, this would be a public entity, a public entity, a for-profit entity, a non-for-profit entity. They would use our infrastructure to access the businesses and customers within our community. So this isn't like the municipality saying, we're gonna come in and provide internet service. We're gonna provide the infrastructure to allow parties to come and give options. Now, we feel this increases competitiveness within the city because today, an internet service provider has to build their own infrastructure, build it to the house or business. And then they have that cost of upfront of this infrastructure to get to these individual places. If we provide the infrastructure to get to these places, it allows more competitive environment places. So this allows multiple options for people. So areas that have one provider, all of a sudden would have multiple providers at multiple price options and speed options. The second would be allowing the city of Hermiston, the county, the state to access city services, regional services, um, state services. And then we would also have the ability to partner with anchor institutions. So helps, health services, education, workforce development and training, small, small business development. So we would have the infrastructure in place that if a resident or business shows not to participate with an internet service provider, we would still maintenance with partnerships with the hospital, we would have the ability, um, to partner with the local education, um, community, potentially a path forward with, um, the school district, with the community colleges, things like that, where they could access the residents within the city of Hermiston without having an internet access. So it would be a closed loop network with districts, with hospitals, things like that, to offer more services. So how the digital infrastructure network works? Well, it's the one common fiber network. That's the utility part. That would be the city part. It's built to be open. So it's free access, open access for users, so the third party, um, could access that. Um, it would be owned by the city. That allows us to have local sovereignty over our digital future. Um, we have the ability to control that infrastructure, invest, maintain that infrastructure. And then there's the structural separation. This is the digital infrastructure. This is the layer on top where the operations and service delivery occurs. So a network wholesale operator, um, would connect providers, operators, and then maintain the system twenty-four seven. So this is an economic development platform that's identified to partner public and private sectors. We provide the expensive part of the infrastructure. The private sector has better access. That's the primary layer. That's the wires, um, poles, um, that would be owned by the city. Then the city would contract with the electronics layer, so that would be the network operator. They would manage our network for us, and then the service layer would be like an ISP provider, a school district, a community college, an anchor institution, um, a telehealth opportunity, um, things like that. So this is how the breakout would work. So pros and cons of the city going down this path. Well, traditional private sector internet service providers, the city of Hermiston's not involved. We don't need to deal with broadband. Somebody else will. The cons with that buddy today. No control over the timeline for build-outs. Um, we have a desire to have build-outs, but we have no control or no ability to force uh, private party internet provider to go and provide service within the city of Hermiston. We don't have the leverage to force them to do that. So it's up to them to decide if there's an economic model or a community model that makes sense for them. Um, no recourse for the city of Hermiston for service levels or quality. Um, based on who you talk to within the community, the service levels, there's frustration, and they often contact the city about the frustration they have with providers. We have no recourse on the amount of service or type of service that they receive, and we have no ability to enforce sector provider. Um, so there are federal, state, regional funds that are being, uh, awarded right now to go and build these, but these are going to single entity companies that provide that service. So when they build out this service to rural areas or rural communities, they only still have a single choice, and that single choice would be the one provider who was awarded that grant. So taxpayer dollars are going to subsidize these entities to provide that access, but at the end of the day, the customer only has one point of delivery. And then we still require oversight with franchise agreements, pull attachment agreements, things like that. So we're still dealing with that today. If we the direction that this infrastructure would go, how we would build it, where we would invest our energy and time and resources. Um, it encourages competition, um, setting priorities and timelines for build-outs. We've already identified the highest need areas in our community. Um, that's where we would propose to start our build-out. Is get the underserved and not-served areas of our community connected and work through a process. That would be something that we would decide how to connect our community. Um, we would ensure that every premises within the city of Hermiston, every premises, um, business and community anchor institution would be connected. We have the ability to do that. Um, we have an you know, we are the end of the line as far as answering for the service we provide. We do it on all our utilities currently today. Um, and it reduces the cost of serving Hermiston's municipal and community anchor sites. So today, the city of Hermiston spends about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars on internet connectivity just for the city facilities alone. And that's not connecting all of our facilities. So there's already amount of money that we already contribute to, um, get access to these. Those costs would then come in-house and go to support this network. And then potentially based on, um, uptick rates, how many people actually subscribe to this service. So historically, um, broadband availability is, availability is often focused on just having access to the internet. So we're looking at, can we just have access? Well, for us, we're looking at this as first get the availability, then get the adoption, then get the utilization. So the economic growth in our community is really driven by the utilization. So one of the areas that we're looking at is digital literacy. So not only provide the ability to have access to every home and business, but have an ability to actually teach them how to use it and utilize it. So there'd be a community education part of this process that we're looking into, and the community benefit not only for the customers, but also the economic development growth. So tonight, staff is prepared to solicit a request for proposal for a network operator to design, build, operate, and maintain a fiber digital infrastructure utility. Um, this is what we've been working on and a path. Um, so right now, we feel like we're at the point where we're at a, a decision matrix to move forward or not move forward. We feel like going out and getting a request for proposals would allow us to get the final pieces of the puzzle for actual cost, build, construction, design, operation, maintenance. These are the pieces of puzzle that we don't have right now. And before we can make educated decision if we should go in this direction. So again, we'd be partnering with S N G. Um, they would be assisting us in the broadband service area mapping, and then manage the process of selecting network construction and operations. So this is a process they're already undertaking in a couple of counties in the state of Oregon and other communities across the states. So, um, a development that we had in our regional discussions is the city of Umatilla. So the city of Umatilla is interested in partnering with this effort. So the idea would be, um, we've identified the needs, and the needs are very similar with both communities. Um, it benefits both cities served, um, areas. So the increased number of connections would help leverage the initial investments. Um, when we look at, um, financial partnerships, things like that, um, there's kind of a low-level threshold of potential connections, um, joining the two cities and the amount of connections that we potentially have is going to allow us the ability to potentially recruit, um, additional R F P responses and potentially better R F P responses. And Umatilla is motivated. They're a motivated partner, and they're willing possibly to share with the efforts and costs of undertaking this effort. So based on how our discussion goes to Tuesday night. And then with that, the cities of Hermiston and Umatilla could form a partnership to build and operate a, uh, open access digital infrastructure network. Um, through this process, we would combine, the two cities would go together to put out a single R F P to connect both communities. So also in this effort, we would prepare the business and economic plan. Um, if we partner with the city of Umatilla, there would need to be a governance model. Um, and how we would share the costs, how we would allocate those costs, how we would allocate resources, how decisions would be made under this model and the oversight of this, and go down and look at this, um, revenue bond, um, grant funding, and then private investment. So we've had some conversations with private investment, just to kind of gauge the temperature. Um, we've had Hermiston's data for a little bit, and we kind of put our feelers out to see, you know, if we went out for this type of effort, would private financing be an option? Would there be interest in people partnering with us? And there was. Um, and so the difficult part about pursuing a private investment is we look to pay for this infrastructure over the next ten, fifteen years. At the end of that, when the infrastructure is paid for, we own it, we manage it, we control the future. Making in the process for the rest of the entity, even after when their investment's paid back. So these are the things we're gonna discuss, um, in this next phase, um, if we get some buy-in from council tonight. So, um, the first part about it is, is kind of what if, what's the possible cost if we went down this? And so the reason why we're focusing on the cities of Hermiston and Umatilla only, um, within the city limits is because for us to get this off the ground, like I said, we've been working on it for five years and continue to go in circles of partnerships and working. And we need a place to start. Hermiston, connecting the city of Umatilla. That's an economically viable option. You know, we can do, um, the projections on, on making this operation pay for itself or get to a break-even point, and what that would take and what that would look like. And so to build the infrastructure cost for the city of Hermiston is a little over sixteen million. And then we did the city of Umatilla's as well. And theirs is a little over six million. So we're look, looking at a build cost of approximately twenty-two million. Now, this is high level. Um, the next level of the R F P process actually gets the actual what it's gonna take to maintain it, what it's gonna take to operate it, you know, what the whole entire cost. This is just the cost to build it. But it's not just a cost to build it. Once you build it, then you have to maintain and operate it. And Byron and I have talked about this often. You know, digital infrastructure isn't something that you dabble in. Either you commit to it and put our resources behind it, and the efforts behind it, or we don't. Um, it's not something that the city can make a decision in five years from now, go a different direction. And so we feel like this next phase will get us to that point where we can make educated, qualified decision if this is something we want to go with. But we feel bored or not. And so we wanted to bring it to council tonight and have that discussion. Um, get any feedback, answer any questions, and, uh, kind of get the temperature of the room from council. So with that, I'm happy to have any questions or discussion.
Yes, I have a, a couple of questions here. With the amount of money being spent, you were saying in that one area is not getting, um, the broad, uh, they can't get internet or something like that. And you say our maps are different from F C that. I'm not quite understanding why the maps are so far apart.
Um, so the FCC has a process where they take, um, internet service provider data. They input that data and create these maps. So based on the accuracy of the maps of the providers, they then create a map of, of the whole United States. Now, based on how accurate those maps are of the providers, they go in and say, okay, you're fully subscribed, you're fully provided. These are the speeds, but it's self-reported. And so FCC has a process where we can challenge those. So FCC tells us that these are areas are full service, they don't have full speeds. So the latest rounds of the FCC maps don't accurately represent the city of Hermiston.
Okay, and, uh, with the, the cost, you were saying that if we as a city, I don't think the city should be in a, a private sector business personally. Uh, this. And if we did buy it and we did own it, then it'll be more cost down the road. And so that means more people are gonna have to pay out more money. And we're already stressed out as it is when we, whenever we try to raise something, we get a house full of people saying that we're, you know, we're already
Yeah. That counselor, Lynton, um, those are, those are excellent points. Um, the point about should the city be involved in digital infrastructure? You know, should the city own digital infrastructure? Should we let the free market decide who and when people get connected? You know, that's a decision for council to make. You know, we bring the reality of our community. Not everybody's connected. Not everybody has multiple providers. Um, the cost to connect to the internet in the city of Hermiston. Um, when you only have one provider and you want internet, you pay what that one provider charges. You know, when we've gone through and done the economic model of creating a digital infrastructure network, done a similar model. Um, we come in at a more competitive price point. And that competitive price point comes in because it's not a profit-based model. You know, getting to service at cost versus You know, getting service at cost versus getting service for return on an investor is different. So, we see this as an opportunity for the city because we think we can provide a better layer of service at a lower cost. And we think that helps the community and connecting everybody in the community, we feel is a But I understand your concerns, and that's something internally we've had many discussions over.
My last question. Is this internet service, is this going out to the county? I switched from one to another one. So, you're just talking about infrastructure, I mean, the internet to go out to the county?
No, this would be within the city limits only.
Within, okay.
Yeah, and based on where you live, you can have up to five different providers. But also, based on where you live, you can have zero provider. So, based on where you live determines your access to the internet within the city of Hermiston. Not everybody is, has equitable access within the city.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions. In the last five years, Starlink has become a real thing. Has that factored into your calculations at all?
Yeah, you know, one of, we explored some conversations with The challenge with a Starlink is it's a single closed network provider. So, you do receive access to the internet. But the ancillary benefits that an open-access model bringing in and tying in anchor tenants, the city, things like that. It doesn't allow that. And so, as we've explored these options, we feel like it provides more community benefit to have the infrastructure and have those providers come in and provide the internet service, but also allows community anchor institutions to participate in that as well. So, we felt it gave more options not to select a single provider. And that would take away, that would be the city choosing the market choose. And we provide options. Providers can subscribe to and offer their internet services. And so, the community determines who they want to provide them versus Starlink is you're just tied to one entity.
Another question is, when you were talking about building fiber out all across the city, are you talking about fiber into the premises? Or are we talking about just putting it up on the poles and making it available for the final connection?
No, we would do fiber to the premise, premises and the business and any anchor institutions. And so, that would be the idea to connect. When you look at the city of Hermiston and all its facilities, it essentially makes a large ring And once we looked at connecting all our city facilities, the cost to extend to businesses, schools, residents, all those things, you know, it lowers that price point and it provides significantly more benefit than just having city facilities connected and the cost that goes with it.
And you were talking about a payoff period of approximately 15 years, is that correct?
Well, I'm real hesitant to say what the payoff period is until we do the network design, the operations, the maintenance. You know, you start adding all those layers in, and then you have to make some assumptions based on uptick rate. You know, just because they have it at their location doesn't mean they're going to subscribe to a service. And so, But until we've done this next level, and that's why we're bringing it to you, that's what's going to bring the last piece of information that we know. And then, at that point, we'll bring the data to you and say, this is what we found, this is what we're projecting, this is what it would cost for the different financial models. And then, we would probably make a recommendation, and then we would have a discussion with council and
Okay, and just to clarify, the city is envisioning owning all of the Layer 1 components, is that correct?
That is correct, and managing the Layer 2 components.
Ah, okay.
So, the city would manage the network operator. It's similar to the way HES does it. We have a contract with Umatilla Electric where we manage the services takes all the policy, process, procedure, rates, cost, decisions. And so, it'd be likened to that model.
Have you made estimate, and going back to the payoff thing, and I know there's another phase yet to go there, but have you made estimates of lifespan of fiber and the switches and routers and that sort of thing?
We've had initial conversations, but there's some variables involved. You know, obviously, underground is more expensive to install, but you can have some longer life pole-mounted. You know, the make-ready work, the cost that goes into that, crew availability. And so, that's why this next step is so important to make good decisions.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, several questions. I think marketable for businesses. I've lived in one side of the city where two providers had a contract, would not allow a third one into their neighborhood. But that's one thing. But I think fiber's great, getting in there, the liability. One is security is the big thing of mine because I know hacking groups, they like to use one big network to get back into other computers. How are we going to make sure that is safe, that people can't do that, even if they're on the public or a business?
Yeah, excellent question, and I think, you know, the resources that the city of Hermiston put You see every day, government, private business, even the most secure networks can be hacked. And so, there's no ability for us to sit and say, if we build this, it's going to be bulletproof. You know, I think you put the best practices in place, stay on top of the trends in technology and do the best we can with the resources. The city of Hermiston already provides an excellent service, not only with excellent staff. And so, we would lean on those resources. But anybody who's nefarious are typically ahead of the game. And stopping people with bad intentions is difficult. And so, I don't think the city would stand here and say that we tempted to, to get hacked in every single day. And we fight them off, and we thankfully, through education and work, we haven't had an incident. But other communities have, and we see the results of that. So, hyper vigilant, but at the same time, we have to be realistic of, of future possibilities.
Okay, then the other question I have, back in the early 90s or late 90s, Hermiston used to be the number-one town for technology for wifi in the town. I remember I was able to sit at Starbucks, be able to get on the internet for free, it was the city I provided email and was able to use it. Since there, that has gone. I don't our committee to be able to get on if they couldn't get on to it. And I think if we do this, this would be a great way we can make our town great and be looking at businesses, being looking at, this is a high-speed area, I can come in here and work and not have to worry about the infrastructure.
Yeah. So, I came into the community in 2002, but my understanding is that open-access network was tied into the Army Depot. So, those were federal funds that helped with emergency management. Once the depot was closed, those funds went away. I believe a third-party entity who was part of it, Fred Ziarri, continues to have some of those primarily on the agricultural side with some soil moisture monitoring, stuff like that. But I'm not up to date with, with that process. But that's my understanding of why it came here and then why it's not still readily available.
And have we thought about after we get Umatilla and we go forward with this, maybe keep it open to like Stanfield, Echo, and say, hey, you're still welcome to partner with us?
Yeah, so I
Might be a great thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. You know, there's a lot of potential in it. But then there's the reality and cost and horsepower. Was the reality of what can we realistically do? And the reality is we have to start somewhere. And starting with these gives us our best possibility or opportunity for success. From that, based on the lessons learned and, and the realities of that, we can look at pursuing other options, other communities, other partners, going down that process. But we got to the point where we felt like we had to make a decision, either we are going to be involved in this or not. And this is the piece of the puzzle that we need to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
So, a good portion that, that's kind of what I'm hearing, is that kind of, because my, my question, I guess, is current providers already have their own infrastructure in place. And so, what's going to entice them to want to buy into our system? If you, if you're living in a town where you get five providers, are those providers even going to buy into our infrastructure? You know, are, how confident are we that we're going to get, get traction with those providers?
Honestly, it may not be the local providers we have in our community today. It may be, we're going to have conversations with them, offer them this process if we decide to move forward. We see a benefit to the provider because it lowers their entry point that service layer access to the internet for the customers. So, it allows a better model for them as far as access and cost. Instead of just providing where they actually have wires, now they can provide the whole city with access. We think with the numbers, we think will be attractive. We've seen significantly smaller communities with this type of effort with multiple options and for providers. So, we feel confident that we'll have an opportunity to give the community options, not only with price, but speed and, and access. But at the same time, you're right, it's, you know, we're talking about building it and hoping people take in efficient process, people, teach people how to use it in a better way and a more efficient way to create an economic engine in our community. You know, I don't think anybody would argue that access to high-speed broadband increases learning, increases jobs, opportunity for telehealth, higher-paying jobs, education access. So, we know the benefits are there, tying into those, but, but it is. It's a risk of saying, yes, we're talking about building something, hoping that people will participate.
And to that, I'm, I'm kind of in, in line with Counselor Linton's thought about if they don't come, it's still got to get paid for, and that's going to end up getting passed on to our constituents. Ongoing costs will be, what'd you say, at-cost service? So, you're going to charge, and we're going to recoup back, and this thing's going to be self-sustaining.
Right, correct. The, the reason why we're just looking within the city of Hermiston and just looking in within the city of Hermiston is the opportunity there has the best chance to be economically viable. So, the economic viability is the reason why we're bringing this to you tonight. We're not looking for a subsidy from the general fund to operate this network. I think if we get to the end of this RFP process and get an understanding of the full costs, and there would be a significant general fund obligation, I think we would probably recommend that provides service at cost and a benefit to the community.
So, it could be, there'd be really good for the community or really bad.
Yeah, and
Financially.
Exactly, you know, that's, that's exactly why we need to do our due diligence. And get those answers for you so we can come with a higher level of certainty about what the costs, implications, long-term commitments, not only to build it, but to operate and maintain it. That's, that's where you guys make the best decisions if we get you the best information.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Earlier, you likened this idea to having roads that people could access. Would, would it similar to like, I can choose if I want to ship via DHL or USPS or FedEx? Similar?
I think that's a great analogy. You know, you could even look at it with, you know, Amazon, Walmart, larger businesses. But the other part about it is it not only allows larger entities, but smaller home businesses to create an opportunity for economic development. You know, that's the driver of our community is to create businesses within our community that can be successful. Small businesses that can utilize this, and now all of a sudden, they're using the roads as well. It's not just the DHL, the FedEx, the UPS that are using it, it's the small home self-made businesses that can lower that entry point to broadband allows them to do that. It allows somebody to come in our community who maybe a spouse works at a local business and they work remotely to be able to do that. And to regroup people who may not work in our community but want to live in our community and still work remotely. You know, it's, it's those ancillary benefits that creates a community investment and, and the viability of, of an effort like this. It's not just, you know, the X's and Z's, but I think your analogy is great.
There's not, certainly nothing preventing an internet service provider who wants to incur the cost of building infrastructure out to homes. But do you think or would they, do you, do you think, or what would that be?
Well, I think, you know, the RFP process is an idea of saying, we're asking for proposals. You know, nothing's limiting a current provider in our community to submit a proposal. You know, to be creative and submit a proposal and say, hey, we would like an opportunity to do this, partner with you. So, I think there's, there's some potential there. There's also the potential of we saying, if we build this network, you no longer have to incur those high costs to get to the lower-served areas. We're going to take those costs on, and you can still use your internet as an opportunity to get into those areas. So, we don't a public entity going in and driving out. We see as an opportunity to help everybody succeed and to give the citizens of Hermiston more options and let the market decide in that way.
Earlier, when you were talking about the FCC map, the download speed of approximately was about 25-point, whatever
25 down, 3 up, yeah.
That number is supposed to represent what exactly as far as the FCC is concerned? Just what the national average target's supposed to be, or what is that number?
Yeah, that's the number where they're saying that's the minimum requirements to be considered to have high-speed internet, essentially.
Perfect. So, I'm always concerned about where the US is second, do you think with the fiber expansion, assuming everybody jumps on board, that we'd be getting closer, that we would be kind of just meeting that 25 mark? Or do you think we'd be, or you think there's capacity to get greatly exceed that?
I think the system is going to be built to greatly exceed that. But the internet service provider and what service they subscribe to would offer a speed, and they would be able to utilize our network to offer that speed. So, it's going to be a decision between the customer and the internet service provider, how fast they want the service, but the infrastructure won't be the limiting factor in that.
But at least under this model, the option would be present.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
At this point in time, it's fiber as the, as the medium for, for which this is going to operate. I'm, you know, I'm, again, I'm old enough to remember the, the cloud like that, that was brought up earlier and used, used it myself. We, you know, through, through CSEP and such. It was, it was, it was nice, but you know, it was, it was spotty. But it was, you know, it had, it was, it was a good start, and we were nationally recognized for, for taking that, being, you know, the first city to actually have a full cloud coverage because of that. And, you know, in, in your description, you know, to me, the model is probably closer to, again, old guy talking, long-distance carriers. You know, way back when, when you, you know, you could dial a phone that was stuck to a wall with a wire attached to it. I know, they are, they are, you know, at the same time, they also had these boxes that you could put quarter in and talk on them. But anyway. But, you know, the, the, the long-distance carrier, you know, back then, you could, you could choose, you know, you could choose who, who provided your, your service. It didn't matter what, you know, where you lived in, in this area, you could, or, you know, what area of the country, basically. As long as you had a phone, you could pick your, you could pick your long Best way to describe it is that that's, that's the availability. So, coming back around to the, to the infrastructure, and we're, we're talking about how numerous providers in the area already have fiber infrastructure in place. Would it be possible for us, you know, as part of the, the, the build-out process to look at Would it be possible for us, you know, as part of the build-out process to look at buying out their infrastructure as opposed to trying to put in new infrastructure as a, you know, as a means of cost savings?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's an excellent question. I think the challenge, the first phase of the then the design of the network. You know, the idea is if we go down this path, we want to do it right the first time. And sometimes when you're bringing multiple pieces in and you're taking existing infrastructure and trying to make it work, the last thing we want to do is take missteps right off the bat. But those answers are left to people who actually design networks. I'm more on the management business side versus the technical side. So I would leave it to the experts to be able to answer the viability of pursuing that path. But I'm not, the concept is we're not opposed to being creative to get something. We just want to make sure if we're going to invest in this effort, we do it right.
Yeah, that would be my, you know, as part of our, you know, dive into this is looking at, you know, whether, whether the, you know, even if it's just the, even if it's just the piece that goes from, from the node to the house, as you know, if that's, if that's a, you know, because, I mean, I don't think there's a whole huge difference in between, you know, the glass fiber that it rides, you know, that the light rides on. However, you know, it's those nodes that are the, that are the driver for the rest of the system, so. And you answered my question, one of the questions I had was on speed because my understanding was, is, you know, fiber's fiber and it's going to be whatever the ISP designs. And would that, would that be something that we would be? Would we have some, as part of our, as part of our requirement to become part of our, you know, to be able to access our network? Would that be, possibly be a requirement as to, you know, you have to have this much speed?
Yeah, yeah. During this process, we're going to identify, you know, kind of those inboards. You know, the concept of having open access means open access. You know, you let the market decide what is, what they're willing to, the service they anybody who partners on this network, subscribes to this network, has an opportunity to be successful as well. And so creating those inboards for that process. But the infrastructure, like Counselor McCarthy and we talked previously, that's not going to be the limiting factor. It's going to be the service providers who's going to determine the price point where they can provide the service and at what speed.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
I mean, you know, this is a chance to update you on where we're at in the process, kind of like Nate highlighted. I mean, the big decisions come after we have some more important pieces of information.
Anything, we're just basically providing.
This is an update, this is where we're at and we'll be back, I would assume, in the next, give them a timeline on that.
Yeah, the conversation tonight was to make sure that there's not any stop, you know, stop the effort, we're done. We wanted to make sure that you guys were aware, like we continue to come back based on milestones that we've gone in the process. After the conversation with the city of Umatilla next week, then 90 to 120 days for the RFP process to do the development, the deployment, the selection, and then getting into that. So I would say we would probably have, coming back to you with and kind of provide an update of where we're at.
Never our focus.
Yeah, yeah. We've been, we've been following this and working towards it. So we appreciate the support for the effort and the time we've worked on it. And as always, I always appreciate the conversation and the great questions, so thank you.
All righty. With that, I think we will adjourn the city manager work session and come back in seven minutes. That's subtle. That's, that's me being subtle. All right. So it is seven o'clock, it's 7:01. We're going to call the regular March 24th, City Council, City Council session together. Wow. Oh, it's been one of those days. We're going to call the session to order with a declaration of a quorum. I would ask everybody again to silence any cell phones and council and staff, when you're, when you're talking, please remember to talk into the microphone. And with that, please stand for the flag salute. By the way.
Yeah, we're starting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now that we're off to a rolling start there, we started out with the city council manager work session on broadband. If you're just now joining us, you might take the opportunity to go back and look at that. It's, there's some good information that's provided. And as such, City Manager Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
None, thank you.
All right. So now is citizen input for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes. State your name and address and direct your comments to me.
I'm sorry, please come up. Good evening. My name is Linda Turner. I'm a retired elementary school teacher from here in Hermiston. I went to grade school here, went to high school here, all the way through school and came back and taught here. And now I'm retired, so it's great. I belong to Hermiston's International, or Hermiston-Altrusa International Club. And our goal is to promote volunteerism in the community, promote leadership, and just an outward effort to make our community a better place to live. We it's been two years in the making and from one thing to another, things have happened. It's called the Read and Walk Trail. We call it the Riverfront Read and Walk Trail, Riverfront Park Read and Walk Trail. What it is, is you have a child's book. You take the book apart, you mount the page on a post, such as what's in the, that's a post, we call that a post. We've taken the book apart, we mounted it on a piece of paper and put it in, on the post for those who want to read to their children or children who want to read to each other or read to a sibling to walk the trail and read the book at the same time, page by page. Spanish. We've done this because, number one, the population of Hermiston Latino community is up about 60%. Underprivileged people are roughly 64% and I'm just getting rough estimates of this, that's not exact, 64% who don't always have access to books. And the obese in Hermiston runs about 16% obese children. We've included Stanfield, Hermiston, Umatilla, and Echo as well that want to be a part of this program. What we have are and what the children were doing, we have partnered with Hermiston Parks and Rec. They put in the posts for us and we were so grateful. And they will allow us to do some laminating as well to keep the stories dry. The park, they put it in, we put the stories in and we're responsible for the stories. But they are going to be in charge of maintenance, correct, and repair if need be. Hopefully, there won't need to be any repair. And on each post, we've also, oh, we've also partnered with the library and with the Next Chapter Bookstore. Children will go book and fill out a little piece of paper and put it in the box. And after a month or so has gone by and we begin to change books, we will draw some names, three names each time out of a box, out of the box of names that are there. And those kids will have an opportunity to win a free book from Altrusa. On the, on that last post, no, go back, on that front, very first post, it lists all the people in the community that have contributed to that. And we had a tremendous amount of response from individuals as well as businesses to contribute to this program. Dollars to complete the project and that was just enough. So we were quite happy about that. And on each sign, there'll be an engraved tag at the top that has either an individual person or a family or a business that has purchased that post to have their name on it and that name will remain there permanently. Go ahead. We have 23 posts around the whole trail. Now, the trail is a mile long, but for safety's sake, for the children, we only put it around the playground area, which is a half mile. And so we wanted that, parents to be able to keep track of their kids. It'll say finished. If it doesn't say finished after the 23rd post, then we'll have some books that are bigger. They can turn around, read the back of the post because we have double-sided posts. They cost more, but we wanted that for the community. And they can go back around the trail and finish reading the book. And we want books that, they're designed for the very young kids, but we wanted it to be for everyone. So as we go along, the first story is very young and we had that book in our adult Battle of the Books program with our nonprofits, which a couple of people here were part of that program. And we had lots of fun, but that book that's our first book, but we'll have books that tend to go up to the middle grades and even some posts for adults as well. So we want everybody to be able to enjoy that with their families, with their friends. We had a ribbon cutting on March 11th. We had a few people there, which was Um, we had a few people there, which was great. We, I wish we could have had more, but getting news out is very difficult these days, but, it's, it's hard. Uh, let me see, what else do I need to tell you? I think that's about it. Do I have any more pictures? That's it? Okay. Thank you.
Having attended that, uh, that ribbon cutting and walking the path, reading the book, I, I actually, yes, I, I read the book. Yes, uh, there, uh, you can hold your applause, please. But, uh, um, it was, it was actually, it was really a nice thing. And, you know, the, the little half mile around the, the playground was not too taxing, so. But I can see, you know, the, the reverse, you know, starting and then reversing to, to read the, you know, the additional pages. I can see how that would be very helpful, you know, to give you bigger, or, you know, because you can use bigger or smaller books than twenty-three pages, so. Um, but it's a, it was a nice fairly, yeah. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, they should, for the most part, withstand, getting a little wetter than what we would like, but, you know, we'll see. Um, I noticed that the ones that were over closest to the river were a little bit more reinforced than the ones further away, so. Um, but it was a, it was a nice thing and, and you guys are to be commended because that is a, that was a fantastic idea. And, you know, doing it both in, in English and Spanish, you know, it has, it also has the, has the ability that, you know, with it being, you know, a geared towards the children, that you could actually, if you really wanted to give yourself a shot at it, you could give yourself a chance to really glad that you guys did that.
I just wanted to add that Linda Turner is the person that started the Battle of the Books in Hermiston, and it has grown. Just wanted everybody to know that.
Okay, uh, next up.
Good evening. I'm Joe Frenell, 1401 Northwest Seventeenth Street, Hermiston. I'm the, um, president of Eastern Oregon Telecom Doing Business as Blue Mountain Networks. Um, and I wanna chat, if I can, briefly about the work session. Is that
It's, uh, I mean, you've got five minutes, so.
Thank you. Thank you. So I came to Oregon, uh, hired as the IT director for the city of Ashland, which was the first open network municipally-owned broadband system in the United States. And when I was hired, uh, it was failing, losing about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. And it was about the same size as the city of Hermiston at the time, twenty-two thousand people. Um, municipally-owned open networks are challenging. They tend to be a race to the bottom as far as price and customer service. And be happy to spend more time is still financially viable, but they still have not paid off their debt. Uh, and I've been in Hermiston for about fourteen years, and they're still working on paying the debt. Um, it was challenging. Since I left, my understanding is they've not reinvested in the network. And so the network actually is about where I left it, uh, thirteen years ago, fourteen years ago. So there are some cautionary tales, uh, where open access municipal broadband is concerned. Uh, there is one in Oregon that I'm aware of that works, and that's Sandy Net. And it's an anomaly. And, uh, the city of Sandy is they, of note, they didn't displace any existing fiber operators by building that network. That network was a greenfield built. At the last count, uh, last report, after the last report to the city council, um, my then CEO, uh, and I met with Nate and Byron and asked them what they were trying to accomplish. They said that they were hoping to connect all the city facilities, as Nate mentioned, and then leverage that fiber to, uh, expand fiber access into the rest of the city. So we said we thought we could do that. And we have two fiber rings within the city existing already. And so we kinda had a head and including all the lift stations, all the pump stations, I think there were over sixty. And we engineered a full solution for all of that. That's been a number of years ago. Came back, showed the maps to Nate, uh, we weren't gonna, and Byron, we weren't gonna hand over, uh, the engineering that we had paid for. But we said, listen, we've done the work. Uh, we think we can find a way to partner to do this and accomplish your goals. And, uh, and so we said, where are our next steps? And they said, we'll be in touch. And that was the last I heard. Since then, we have not been sitting idle. Uh, we had about seven hundred home about fifteen hundred fiber to the home passings or, or addresses in, within the city limits of Hermiston. Of note, uh, we've also built fiber to the home in all of Umatilla and South Hill. McNary is the one ex, uh, ex, uh, exception to that. McNary being underground and it was direct buried old cable. So the cost to re-bury fiber in all of McNary is currently prohibitive. But we've expressed interest in partnering with the city of Umatilla to install conduits so that, and which we would then lease to finish the fiber to the home build in Umatilla. Council, to not displace longtime partners within the city and within the area, but to find ways to work together to solve this problem and, and recognize the fact that we've invested a lot of time and money with no grants, no subsidies, trying to solve this problem on our own. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eastern Oregon Telecom. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is, uh, David Hanson. I live at 1737 West just in the broadband business, um, working for companies like CBS and Viacom. Have built networks all over the United States, um, built the, uh, built the city of San Francisco, came in and figured out how to, how to get on a return on investment. Built three hundred thousand homes there, among many others that we built. So I've been around the business for many, many years. I'm recognized as one of the pioneers of the cable television industry. But I'm also on your budget committee. So I'm very, very concerned about our city spending any money that we wouldn't get a return on investment on very quickly. I'm happy to use my expertise giving you an opinion. Along the way, I spent twenty years buying and selling cable companies all over the United States, working for some of the largest cable companies in the United States to, to do acquisitions for them, do financing for them. I've raised billions of dollars for them. So I understand the finances of communications very well, and I'm happy to volunteer my time to help the city in any way I can. Because the last thing I wanna do is spend one nickel of this city's money the wrong way. I'm available for help if you need some help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public, yes?
There's, I'm Virginia Rome Garcia, and I live at 435 East Sunset Drive, Hermiston, Oregon. I'm here to share a concern that I have on the bill, the Hermiston, uh, city bill, the billing system. I, as I was looking through my bills, my light bill, my, um, water bill, sewage bill, um, about two, two months ago, back in probably February, January, I came across a charge that's, that had a penalty of six dollars and fourteen cents. Then I looked at the following month, and there was also a charge of six dollars. The city of Hermiston, to inquire about the penalty charge, I was told that it was because of the, the billing, the way the, uh, payment went from the city to my bank. And as I looked at my billing, my, uh, banking system, my banking forms, I came across that the, when they send the bill was on the ninth. Um, I have my date to be drawn, my auto pay, which I was perplexed because my payment is on auto pay. So was because my bill was late. I was just really wondering why. I was perplexed why. And I still wonder why. Why is it that we have to pay a penalty when the, our, one of the reasons we have our payments on auto pay so we don't be late? And then we turn around and we're late? I have solved this problem just by moving the, uh, auto pay two days ahead. But I am concerned about other citizens that might be on auto pay and are not aware of any of the penalty charges that are being taking place. Um, that being said, I must I think it was on a Monday, I came across, uh, there was a clerk that was attending a Latino or Hispanic guy. And she was doing a wonderful job explaining to him what was, you know, about the bill. It was a li- big bill, it was six hundred and some dollars, but she was explaining to him about what was going on with the bill. Um, and then the weather meter. I received one, a, um, what do you call that, um, a text, if it was a text. And I was advised that my, that we were using about a gallon and a half more per hour than I did the following, the and sure enough, I had a leak on the outside. So I was very glad that at least they warned me about that, the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any others?
Mayor, we do have somebody Spanish speaking.
Okay.
They changed their mind.
Okay. All right, uh, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, consent agenda items A, B, and C. Uh, is there any pub seeing none? Are there any council comments? Seeing none. Are there any items that need to be removed? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C?
I'm gonna approve A through C.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council Hayward, seconded by, I'll give it to McCarthy on the phone. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Still wanna answer once in a while on these. No, there's no chance of me voting at all tonight. Okay. Okay, uh, no items removed. Resolutions, resolution twenty-three sixty-one, well number four, control system contract award. City manager Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this evening, we're asking you to award the contract for the well number four's control contract. That is an image of the existing control system at well number four. I love this picture because, not because of the, the yellow, um, sections show what's out of service, but actually below that on the left-hand side, it's apparently, there's so many things that are out of service that the operators have decided instead just start labeling things that are working. So, uh, because apparently everything else is out, out of date. So, uh, that's kind of the, the realities of, uh, the existing well number four's control system, uh, put in in the mid nineteen sixties. Uh, well, number four, uh, provides about twenty-five hundred gallons a minute, uh, to our water system. Uh, but unfortunately, because of the control systems, uh, it's, uh, become unreliable, uh, definitely inefficient, and because of the age of what that means is we experience some pretty large pressure fluctuations, uh, that become challenging for our staff to manage. Uh, this, uh, project has been included in our adopted capital improvements plan since the first capital improvement plan in two thousand eighteen. At the time, it was slated for construction in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, unfortunately, we experienced some, uh, unforeseen or unanticipated unfunded mandates from, uh, the feds. Uh, the EPA had a, really a nationwide, uh, mandate on some lead and copper requirements for all drinking water systems around the country. So, uh, for us to comply with that was pretty costly, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, in our approach to, to executing these capital projects, uh, we just to two years of relatively higher inflation, uh, time period. At that time, the, uh, construction industry is seeing inflation around seven or eight percent, uh, which is a little higher than the, the regular inflation readings that you see. Uh, additionally, this project is, uh, pretty heavy on electrical components, uh, which are, uh, much more so than something like plastic pipe. Uh, much more, um, exposed to, uh, the recent spate of, uh, federal tax increases on imported materials, uh, particularly electronics. So, uh, we've seen some significant cost increases as a result of action from the federal government that ultimately ends up having to get paid for by our local ratepayers. So I wanna make sure that I got that in there because we do report, um, on our capital improvement. See the cost test, uh, actual costs came in higher than what we originally anticipated back in two thousand eighteen. We opened bids last Tuesday, uh, good response from the construction industry. So we received five responsive bids. Uh, ultimately, Tapany Inc., uh, coming in with the low bid at five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, Ta- Tapany's, uh, well qualified. We've worked with them several times, uh, just in the past couple of years, actually. So we feel good about recommending award of this contract to Tapany Inc. And I'd stand for any questions.
Council Kelso.
Can you characterize the nature of the work that we've done in the past with Tapany?
Yeah, a lot of what they lift stations, so again, dealing with, uh, electronic controls, but also pipe, uh, installations.
Council Letton.
Um, with their bids, have they ever had to go, come back and ask for more money because it costs more than what they originally bid? And if yes, how much more?
So I wouldn't have that number off the top of my head for, for Tapany. Every project's different. Um, I don't anticipate us seeing any, um, any change orders on this project.
Council Roberts.
In your, uh, staff report, you, uh, talked about that, uh, the costs would have to inflationary and tariffs and things that, that are driving that. Um, can you talk about what the average ratepayer would see as an increase, um, due to this project?
Uh, so first off, we don't anticipate any ratepayers seeing any increase associated with this project. Uh, but ultimately, this project has to be paid for through our rates. And so our rates are built assuming our capital improvement plan. And so really what we're doing is we're just pushing off other projects if we see increases, you know, here. But, uh, important to keep in mind, we have, uh, a little under six thousand utility customers in the city. So if somebody wanted to do the numbers real quick, we could come up with what a, a cost would be to the typical customer there.
That's fine. I just, I was under the impression that we're gonna have to raise rates to pay for this.
No.
Okay. All right, uh, any public comment on resolution twenty-three sixty-one? Seeing none. Council comments? Other than the questions you've already asked? None? All right, uh, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three sixty-one and lay a plan in the record?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Council Roberts, seconded by Council Hayward. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Uh, resolution twenty-three sixty-two, initiate LID for Northwest Second Street. City Manager Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this resolution twenty-three sixty-two is, uh, the first step in, uh, formation of a local improvement district to construct Northwest Second Street. So Northwest Second Street, uh, this is a, uh, image street view looking south from Elm, uh, on Northwest Second. This is, uh, looking back the other direction from Cherry, uh, looking north on Northwest Second Street. Uh, this is an aerial. The existing, uh, developed lots, uh, Elm Avenue is there along the north side and, uh, going north-south there, that's Northwest Second Street. Uh, so fronting onto Northwest Second, there's t- uh, five total tax slots. Three of them are developed, uh, two of them are what we would consider to be undeveloped. Those are the ones outlined in blue, uh, because there's no structures built on them currently, but they've been actively utilized, uh, for many years, uh, with traffic coming out onto, uh, Northwest Second Street. So with these, uh, aerial images, we don't have every year, uh, going back in time, but it is interesting to go back and look at some of these aerials. This is from two thousand and twenty-four. You can see those, um, undeveloped lots that front on Northwest Second. Uh, so I'm not sure if they have sold off their access onto State Highway two oh seven, uh, but they clearly utilize Northwest Second Street as their access and then access out onto Highway two oh seven from those, uh, tax lots. Although they've not been built upon, they're clearly being utilized. Uh, going back a little bit more here, you can see two thousand and seventeen, there was active utilization, at least on the western, uh, tax lot. Uh, two thousand and five, I thought I had, yeah. Um, two thousand and five, obviously some storage going on there. Two thousand and two, some storage going on there. So, again, this just pointing out that the ingress and egress for those lots is clearly onto Northwest Second. So whether they're developed or not, they're clearly utilizing, uh, Northwest Second in its undeveloped state, which is currently. Used now. So, uh, this is looking, an overhead, looking at the intersection of Elm and three ninety-five. Uh, Starbucks being on the lower left, uh, McDonald's on the upper right, Jack in the Box in the upper left. Uh, so, uh, many of you are probably familiar on Highway three ninety-five, maybe about ten years or so ago, uh, ODOT came through and installed, uh, raised, uh, yellow painted concrete, uh, traffic separator on, uh, three ninety-five. Um, and so that, uh, prevents traffic from turning left into Starbucks or, uh, turning left into, uh, Jack in the Box if they're heading northbound. And so what, uh, ODOT, uh, recently had approved by the. Uh, traffic separators, raised concrete barriers with candlesticks, uh, on the Elm Avenue portion. And the portion that we're specifically focused on, uh, this evening is on the western side, uh, west of three ninety-five. So you can see that red line, uh, that's on the west side of, of Elm, uh, goes through the intersection of Spruce Avenue. So currently Spruce, uh, goes north-south into Elm. And so currently, uh, vehicles can turn left out of there and, and head west. Uh, really, a lot of the challenge that we see, um, is certainly a lot of folks, uh, trying to access, um, uh, either Spruce or some of the businesses there on the south side of Elm, uh, cause a lot of challenges and congestion with. Barriers to essentially make, uh, Spruce Avenue a right-in, right-out only. So, uh, any traffic coming from the north that's looking to come onto Spruce, uh, will no longer be able to do that. So, yeah, this, uh, gives you a little bit better, uh, broader image of the area. So, uh, those arrows are showing if you were, uh, trying to go westbound on Elm coming off of Spruce, um, you can currently do that. Or if you were coming from the north trying to turn, uh, left onto Spruce, uh, you can currently do that. With these, um, uh, traffic barrier, uh, that will no longer be physically possible. Uh, so that's going to redirect a lot of traffic, um, to access those existing. Second Street. So how did we get here where we have, uh, multiple, uh, developed active commercial businesses, uh, operating off of a undeveloped gravel street? So, uh, the city of Hermiston's street requirement, uh, for our street standards are that at the time that a property develops, uh, you build on it. Uh, you're required to construct the street in front of that tax lot. Uh, undeveloped lots, uh, that haven't been built on yet, they're not required to construct the street because it's assumed that at the time that they actually do build something on there, uh, they will be required to construct the street in front of there. Uh, unless, uh, the property engages in a non-remonstrance agreement. And so a non-remonstrance. Uh, if they sign the non-remonstrance agreement, which says that, uh, they're essentially waiving their ability or their right to, uh, uh, contest formation of a local improvement district in the future, and they agree to participate in that local improvement district in the future because they've been essentially granted variance, um, from our street standards, uh, been able to develop without, uh, building the street at the time that they built. So currently in, uh, that neighborhood, and again, uh, in the center of the image going north-south there is Northwest Second, uh, the two properties outlined in red do have non-remonstrance agreements, uh, so they were, uh, allowed to build and granted a variance from the city's standards. Those, uh, undeveloped actively used sites, obviously they don't have a non-remonstrance agreement. And then, uh, the other tax lot, uh, we're not sure how they, uh, developed without getting a non-remonstrance agreement or, uh, complying with city's development standards. Sensitive button. So, uh, for a little bit of background, the local improvement district, uh, this is a tool that City of Hermiston, uh, used to use extensively back in the eighties and nineties and, and early two thousands. Uh, City of Hermiston has, uh, developed three hundred and twenty-two local improvement districts uh, over, uh, the life of the city, uh, the most recent one being the South Hermiston Industrial Park, LID. Um, just a couple of years. About doing local improvement districts. There's a number of reasons for that. Uh, but it's a tool that's certainly there and available to us. Uh, we just have chosen not to, to utilize it for a number of years. So with a local improvement district, uh, once it's formed, then the city goes in and, uh, in this case, it would be a street. You can use it for other types of, you know, utilities. Uh, but in this case, it'd be for a street. The city would go in and construct a street and then levy the cost of that, uh, development onto the adjacent properties. Uh, and they have the ability to pay that back immediately or, or instruct payments over time. Uh, so, uh, in initiating an LID, uh, the adjacent property owners could initiate an LID if they wanted to, or the city council can, uh. If it's initiating an LID, is to, uh, pass a resolution that calls for a feasibility report. That is what this resolution is that we're talking about right now. Uh, so we can't really talk about anything in, of much substance or meat with regard to the, to a project unless and until we have that feasibility report. So, uh, we can't really talk too much about the scope of the project. We can't really even guess at cost estimates. Um, so, uh, what this feasibility report does is it scopes out the project, uh, develops some cost estimates and lays out the method for assigning costs of a potential LID. Uh, so this resolution, uh, would be that first bullet point up there. It, uh, outlines the costs, scopes out the project. Uh, it does not form the local improvement district. It does not commit the city to any additional costs. It does not commit the, uh, property owners to any additional cost. Uh, later on this evening, uh, the very next resolution, if you approve this one, uh, that, uh, step would be to declare the intent to form, uh, a local improvement district, but that would still not form an LID. Uh, what that would do is it would set a date for a public hearing. And at that point, then the city council may choose to implement an LID or table it, postpone it, or simply abandon it at that point. So, uh, not. So with that, I'd ask you to approve, uh, this resolution, uh, so we can, uh, present you at the next resolution with the report, which we already have prepared.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Seeing none. Council comments? Council Kelso.
I'm just wondering if the city has had any informal interaction with the property owner or owners.
Not on this pro- not on this, uh, project specifically. We didn't want to, to do that until we had their report fully completed and the council briefed.
Thank you.
Council Litten.
Okay, the street that you said you want to fix or repair. Street and Second Street, correct? Cherry. Okay, Second Street, Cherry, and, uh, over, up to Elm.
Correct.
Okay, and then the street that's in front of, uh, the, that's, um, storage units there. And so, and that's, is that Second Street?
So on this image that you can see, uh, the vertical street, the north-south street that fronts onto that red box, that is Northwest Second. The street along the bottom, that's Cherry. So what we're talking about for the LID is just development and just paving of Northwest Second between Elm and Cherry. I think your ask. Dogwood. And so that portion is not currently paved either between Spruce and Second. And I will get into some thoughts on development of Dogwood in the next resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three sixty-two and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by Council McCarthy, seconded by Council Roberts. Roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Against. Resolution twenty-three sixty-three, declare intent to form local improvement district for Northwest Second Street. City Manager Smith.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we now have a preliminary engineering report that you just authorized. So thank you for that. Uh, so that was included in your agenda packet. And so this preliminary engineering report, it, uh, outlines the project scope. It establishes some estimated project costs. It establishes the actual area of impact. It. Uh, includes the estimated cost to each of the properties. So, uh, the street shown in yellow shaded there, that is Northwest Second Street, uh, terminating on the north into Elm Avenue and on the south into Cherry. So, uh, but then also project scope-wise in terms of what we'd actually be building because not all streets are the same. Uh, and so what we're actually building is what we would consider to be a deviated city standard. So the City of Hermiston has, uh, standards for, you know, the street widths, what all's included and those types of things, uh, depending on the classification of the street. Uh, our city standard would include, uh, a twelve-foot, two twelve-foot travel lanes, a six-foot, uh, paved area for on-street parking, and then also curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, that, uh, development standard requires forty-eight feet of right-of-way width. Uh, but what we're proposing is a deviated, uh, deviation from that standard where instead of two twelve-foot travel lanes, instead we have, uh, slightly wider travel lanes, so two fourteen-foot wide travel lanes, but we eliminate the, uh, space for the on-street parking, uh, but maintain the curb gutter and sidewalk. And so that fits within a forty-foot right-of-way, and that is the. Of, uh, where, uh, deviation from the city standard exists. That is exactly what is built currently on Dogwood, uh, between three ninety-five and Spruce. So, uh, that two fourteen-foot wide travel lanes, no six-foot wide paving for, for on-street parking and then curb gutter and sidewalk. So, uh, if you wanted a, a real visualization of exactly what we're proposing, uh, there on Dogwood between Spruce and three ninety-five, that's exactly what we'd be proposing to build. So, uh, the benefiting properties from this, uh, project, it's hard to, to see on this image, but it's included in the report that was, uh, in your packet. Uh, this is slightly better image. Uh, so the benefiting prop. Northwest Second Street, the three outlined in red are currently, uh, developed. Uh, they actually have structures on them, and then the two in blue there, uh, are undeveloped, but they front onto Northwest Second. In terms of methodology for assigning the costs, uh, very standard in the, so I believe all of the local improvement districts that City has, uh, Hermiston has engaged in, uh, we assign the costs based on the frontage that each parcel has that they front onto the, the improvements. So the frontage improvements on Northwest Second, uh, again, you have to remember, uh, if you were to measure from Cherry to Elm, it's probably only about five hundred feet, uh, but we're. Tidge involved is about nine hundred and forty feet. Total estimated project cost, uh, to develop to that standard, five hundred and eighty-thousand dollars. Gives us a total, uh, cost per foot, uh, of frontage of six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Or six hundred and seventeen dollars per foot. So in terms of the cost per property, you can see those, uh, shown there for each of the properties. And then also, uh, important, uh, to remember, there is the, uh, option, uh, for the city to contribute, uh, to the cost of, of a street improvement. Uh, it's being proposed for this LID that the city contribute, uh, zero, uh, to this. Uh, the process moving forward now, uh, we are here in the second bullet point where the actual resolution that you're considering this evening would be, uh, whether or not to declare your intent to form. Uh, and really the meat of that is, uh, setting a date for a public hearing, uh, which would be May twelfth in the, the resolution as presented. Uh, so if you, uh, approve the resolution this evening, uh, then immediately tomorrow, we would, uh, mail by certified mail to all of the impacted properties. Uh, formal notice informing them of all of their, uh, rights, responsibilities, and options pertaining to the LID, uh, providing them with a form to remonstrate or formally oppose. The public hearing on May twelfth. Uh, so then, at the May twelfth, uh, council meeting, uh, council could, you know, number one, take public testimony, uh, hear any thoughts, uh, from, uh, impacted folks. Uh, and then at that point, you may choose to table, uh, the issue, you know, ask for more input, uh, reject the, the LID or approve the LID. And so if you did, uh, approve the LID or form the LID on the twelfth, uh, then it would move into design. Uh, we would actually do the full-blown design through this summer, put it out for bid, uh, in the fall, uh, award a contract in the winter, and then begin construction in spring of two thousand and twenty-six. On Elm. Uh, once we're done with, uh, constructing the improvements, uh, then we come back and we do, uh, a full accounting of all of the actual costs because, uh, right now, we're just basing everything off of cost estimates. Uh, once we have the actual costs, then we come back, true those up again based off of the frontage that each property has onto the improvements. And then that's the actual amount that gets assigned, uh, to each of the properties. Now, I mentioned I'd come back to the, the city's contribution, and this gets, uh, to Council Linton's question earlier about West Dogwood. Uh, so what we are proposing, so this is a related project, but I can't stress enough, it is a, a different. However, we are simultaneously recommending, uh, to go in and construct the same improvements on West Dogwood between Spruce and Second, and having the city cover one hundred percent of the cost of that project. We estimate that project cost approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So taken in total, that, in one sense, could be considered to be the city's contribution to the improvements in that entire neighborhood. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Council McCarthy.
You may have already answered this. I just want to make sure, since I can't picture that section, uh, south of Cherry, is Second Street paved. south of Cherry, is Second Street paved?
Council.
Okay, there's a couple of houses on Cherry Street. Would they be affected, because one is right on the corner, and then the other one is across, let me see, I'm heading this way. It would be on the, it would be on the south end?
The only properties that would be assessed anything for the LID would be these five properties, these three existing commercial properties and the two development properties.
Okay.
Because the road is not going to go to those.
Yeah, the road, and I think it's on yeah, the road will terminate the intersection again is already hard-surfaced.
And Starbucks is on Dogwood, isn't it? But you're not going to go down that far?
Starbucks only has access on to Elm.
Oh, there's an oil change place, I think it's called Jiffy, are they going to be affected?
Quickie Loop, no.
Quickie Loop, no, okay.
Thank you. Any other council comments, questions?
Only thing I have is, if we go through this, will we be somewhat advertising the new way of how that's all going to be, the ODOT way and everything? Because I know a lot of people uses that intersection just advertising, making the public know this is coming. The change is going to be, because I know it will affect everybody that goes Starbucks and Jack-in-the-Box is saying, hey, this is changing, so you know that you can no longer do this after this date.
I guess you are referring to the barricades going up the block left turns out of Spruce, and yeah. So again, I think we'll work closely with ODOT, and I think that's again why, what really drove this project coming up. So this project has been included in the city's capital improvement plan since 2018. It's just simply been in the appendix, because we didn't have the resources to construct this project. But when ODOT it's having some thoughts and concerns about, you know, not being able to get on to Elm, and so we wanted to make sure that we tried to coordinate with ODOT and do these projects simultaneously, rather than looking like we're not working together and coordinating on these things. So, that's why we're kind of moving on the timeline that we are.
Yeah, I have, Councilor Roberts?
Kind of a related, I guess roadway there is Cherry. The last time I was on Cherry, I don't think it was in the greatest of shape. Are we looking at doing upgrades? Because if we're going to see increased traffic, is there a plan to take a look at some of those other streets as well?
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge. We're not going anywhere outside of the bounds of that.
I have one other. I gotta make sure everybody else has a chance first. Okay, Council.
I just want to emphasize on what Council Hayward was saying about the difficulty, because for Jack-in-the-Box to come on to Elm on one end, it's hard to get out, and then to go out on 395 is almost impossible unless somebody let you out. And a lot of times, they do not like to let you out. So, if you could pass that along to ODOT and see if they can come up with something else as well to help. There's a lot of people will cut into that area just so they can go they'll cut through there, so there's, that increases the traffic.
Yep.
Okay, um, everybody's had a chance to comment, public comment? Seeing none, any other council comments? None? Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2363 and lay upon the record?
Motion to adopt? Second.
Okay, then moved by Council Hayward, seconded by Council Roberts. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Five, zero. Resolution 2364, Good Shepherd Healthcare Systems Police Funding Agreement. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Get to the right spot here, okay? So, we talked a little, we've talked a little bit about this project or option that with, in cooperation with Good Shepherd before with the council. Here's kind of the finalized agreement. A number of years ago, Chief Edmiston started the conversation offered in other locations, and it being beneficial for a number of different reasons. Up to this point, the hospital leadership hadn't been interested, but when the latest CEO, Mr. Matheson came, the conversation, he was interested. We put together numbers and showed them the numbers, and they were still interested. And so, what is before you tonight would be putting four new officers on a Good Shepherd beat. So, they would be, they would be assigned to the hospital, and it wouldn't necessarily be the same officer on the staffing and then on the leadership of the shift. And that they would basically pay the costs of four additional officers. That's what the agreement is before you, that includes training, it includes equipment. So, from the police department standpoint, we see a lot of different benefits as far as kind of safety, hospitals are kind of soft targets that people have been attacking in different scenarios. It allows us to potentially help conduct investigations, both for incidents that happen that bring victims to there or people who participated in those incidents. So, that's really the basis of this agreement, hospital's already given approval. But we'd be open to any questions or any discussion on the subject.
Council Roberts?
I, you know, help oversee some of these contracts in my line of work as well, and they are hugely beneficial. I'm assuming that the relationship with Good Shepherd is probably we fall out of favor or their funding changes, and they just say, you know, we're not going to opt back in. Can the city absorb the cost of four officers? Should it come to that, are we looking at laying people off if that were to happen?
We can't absorb this cost under the current scenario, you know, ten years from now, or, you know, if we, you know, if it lasts that long, we would evaluate and look at what situation we were in. But if it were to happen next year, we would have to either lay people off, or if there was a retirement, or things like that.
Okay, I appreciate that, I, like I said, I like the concept of the contracts, they are
It's definitely a downside to the, but
Any other comments, questions, I should say?
I think it's a great ideal from working in a hospital staff, our nurses do amazing work, and I have seen quite a bit of the unfortunate side of the mental health side toward those nurses and stuff, I think it would be a great benefit for them, and I think Good Shepherd probably would keep it going, because they'll start getting feedback from their nurses saying, hey, this is actually helping us, so I can see them probably keeping this going. Thank you guys for the work.
Public comment? Seeing none, council comments? Council Kelso?
Yeah, I would just say, I think this is a great opportunity, I think it's a win-win for both of our organizations, and I think that Good Shepherd has been a huge community partner with us, and one of our largest employers. I think this is a great sort of a synergistic moment when we can come together and both benefit from this greatly. In my ride-along with HPD, I spoke about this with the officer I was riding along with, and he said that oftentimes, one of their board officers that's on shift can be pulled away for police work that's required during any sort of incident that winds up with people in the hospital. And so I think this would free up more manpower for HPD and provide more police hours on the street in Hermiston, which I think will be hugely beneficial. And I read the contract, and I think it's a great thing too, that the officer that's stationed on the beat at the hospital isn't glued there. So, in the event of an emergency or a major incident, they can be called away and help out the other officers that are on duty. So I think, again, that's another benefit to the city. I'm greatly in favor of this.
Any other council comments?
Had to respond to a hospital on numerous occasions myself to either assist or cover or have discussions or take into custody somebody that has gone beyond what they should in a polite society. So, again, my, although I do echo Council Roberts' concern that, you know, that, you know, the fact that, you know, that we have we have the ability to pay for it right now, when, you know, if something were to happen, the changes in leadership at the hospital and worst-case scenario that is, so that would be my biggest concern and my biggest cautionary on this. Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2364 and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second. You can have it, David.
I didn't even finish the word.
I'm going to give it to you anyway. Then seconded by Council McCarthy, because I heard him. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, five, zero. Signing this right now. Presentations and possible action on small modular reactor legislation, SMRs, City Manager Smith?
Yes, so I was approached by our county commissioner, Dan Doran, that he wanted to come and discuss some legislation the county has put forward in the state legislature relating to small modular reactors or SMRs, so, Mr. Doran?
Commissioner Doran?
Mayor, Primer, and council members, Dan Doran, County Commissioner for what Governor Kotek has labeled as the legendary Yumitila County. So, first of all, I salute the Hermiston City Council for their proactive discussions for the last two times that I've visited, have taken a real proactive look at infrastructure, infrastructure's critical to this city. Counties that haven't been as proactive as the city of Hermiston, for sure. And it shows, and it's an uphill battle when you don't address it ahead of time. If you're trying to play catch-up with infrastructure, you are playing catch-up, and there is no doubt about that. Two years ago, Yumitila County, because of all of the development that is going on, especially in the west end of the county, sat down with utility providers and potential developers, and had a very in-depth discussion about energy and where we're headed on energy, and is there anything that the county, we have some of the first cogen gas plants that were built in the nation, and we have a hydroelectric dam that was commissioned one year before I was born. And so I grew up touring McNary Dam like every other year, and we had classes on McNary Dam about every year. And the one thing that stuck out to me, out of all of the lectures, all of the visits, and all of the tours, that less than one percent of the power generated at McNary Dam stayed in Yumitila County. On top of that, it hasn't changed a whole lot since in Yumitila County and Moro County. We still have the two original gas cogem plants, which is aged technology now, but they still supply us over eleven hundred megawatts of power. So, today, even with the industries that we have, the high horsepower irrigation centers, the casinos with high energy uses, data centers with high energy uses, food processing plants with high energy uses, we're still shipping out just under, or we're still retaining less than thirty percent of the power generated on a megawatt basis. And we're importing power now an eye-opener to us is how are we going to continue to attract high-value developers into Yumitila County if we don't have power beyond the ten-year window that we're looking at right now? We looked at renewables, that was our first kind of analysis and data-driven decision-making. Renewables, first of all, Yumitila County has both high-value and low-value farmland, but what we really struggle with is the Oregon land use planning laws that are now fifty years old. I actually think that's ever adopted across the US. They are fifty years old, and they definitely need to be tuned up, there is no doubt about that. But that's, that is a major lift. So, if we start looking at renewables, the first thing you have to know is how are you going to get that power from the renewable farms into the grid? And transmission is huge. And we look at B2H that's twenty-four years in the making, and they haven't turned a shovel up. We look at the short ten-mile run from Yumitila to Boardman that's over ten years old, and it's been challenged. Transmission is a huge bear projects. How do you get enough power to a project to be self-sustained and still not put the community grid in jeopardy? So that there is resilience if that goes down. And so we started about two years ago, having some very serious discussions with different developers of SMRs, or small modular reactors, nuclear reactors. There is a total of about six technologies now. All of them are either permitted or in the process of being permitted. There is two SMRs being except for at Oregon State University, there is a research SMR nuclear plant. It's the only, it's the only operating research plant in the nation. Very similar technology has been used since the late nineteen sixties in the nuclear submarine in defense in our DOD. So the technology is proven, and the ability to implement is in the process of being proven. So, what that led to was, looking back in nineteen eighty, the people of Oregon institution. Really, what happened was established statute limitations. One is that you couldn't build a nuclear plant in Oregon until the federal government had a permanent repository for way had a permanent repository for waste. In the interim, since then, the government has a, what they, the federal government now calls the federal, the permanent interim repository, which is storage onsite, which is very, waste is a big part of the discussion when you talk about light water reactors have been storing, storing waste onsite for over 50 years with zero issues. How it's stored is it goes into a cooling pond first, and let's, let's, I'll back up. And I, if, if I get too long, please give me the hook, because I can talk on this for a long time. Is, in this part of the country, especially this part of Oregon, when you say nuclear, the first thing that comes to mind is Hanford. Hanford's nuclear waste has zero relativity to SMR or energy nuclear waste. Hanford was all is solid waste. So that waste, which may be the size of your arm, that lasted 40 years energizing an SMR, is put into, it's classified, it's glassified, put into a steel container after it's cooled, steel container, put into a concrete cask, put into a steel container, put into a concrete cask, and stored onsite. The federal government went out and looked for a permanent site for nu RFP throughout the nation for individual communities to participate as a permanent site that all of these casks could be transported to. And, and what they're looking for is basically 80 sites across the US as permanent cask storage sites. They had over 200, in the first, in the first solicitation, over 200 responses from communities across the nation. And the second, the second solicitation got just about the same, 196 if I remember right. There are many communities across the nation that, that waste casks. So that's the first portion of the, what you have to overcome in Oregon to become a site for an SMR. The next is, it has to be a referendum. The people have to vote for it. And so in our bill SB, or HB 2410, we have the, it's built in that the referendum has to be voted on by the people of Umatilla County. So for this demonstration project, the people of Umatilla County would have to go through the referendum, poll it, or anything would proceed. The next thing is Oregon's policies, procedures, SSEC, siting, all of those laws have to be updated. And this bill also talks to that. So without getting into any further details, and there's a lot of small ones, we're in the middle of finalizing the First Amendment to this on recommendations from ODO, Oregon Department of Energy. They have suggested some minor changes in policy discussions. PUC include that language because PUC is not quite sure how they want to finalize that. But the, the other one is, we're also working with the tribe, CTUIR, for language on consultation by the tribes as this process moves forward. This is the first bill that's addressed nuclear energy since 1980 that's actually come out of commission. This bill, right now, has bipartisan and bicameral support. It's still an uphill battle. There is no doubt about that. But if you go on OLIS and look at 100 support letters in there. The nice thing is that in the US, they just finished a poll, and I think I sent Manager Smith that link to that, that presentation. Support is at about 66% across the nation for SMRs. And it breaks down really pretty, pretty evenly between Democrats and Republicans, conservatives and liberals, and geographically. So a lot of people said, hey, how does that shape up in Oregon? We're, we're a little different. Well, there is some unpublished go too deep into, but I can tell you that results are not unsimilar to what the national polling is. And it's amazing, it's the folks under 40 that have the biggest support for this energy source. It's a need that we're gonna have to fill no matter what. It's not the data centers, it's not the, the, the individual high-energy users that we have several of in, in the US. But if you look at your, your computer screen, it's not that computer screen that's eating all the energy. It's all the information that's behind it. Every time you hit a link, every time that you hit and that, and we are in the heart of being those energy storage units for the nation. But we can't continue to do that without power. And so I'm here this evening to ask for the support of HB 2410. You can see on the second, second document in the back, there's a logo, logo page. That page now is about four pages with different logos from different counties, different cities throughout the state, different org One of the, the ones that I kind of chuckle at is Columbia County, because they were home to Trojan. And, and they are very much in support of this product, of this bill. The biggest questions we get now, now that we're eight weeks into the legislative session and discussing this, is how do we turn this, I mean, how does our county participate? Well, right now, we're trying to keep this as a demonstration project in Umatilla County. But I, I can't guarantee that's what it's gonna look like by the end of the session because there is compromise and there's a lot of but right, as of right now, we are trying to maintain this as a demonstration project in Umatilla County. Because of to microgrid and end-user and off-taker, and still have the ability to feed overhead transmission without additional transmission line and distribution, and without interrupting the resiliency and the, the ability to keep the lights on in, in, outside of the micro feed into the off-taker. I, I definitely will answer any questions you guys have. I have want additional questions, feel free or go through Manager Smith or Mark. But it's a, it's a huge project. It's a big lift, and all the support that we can get is extremely important. I understand there's questions. I sit down with the opposition. I've sat down with the two people and had lunch that originated the referendum in 1980. We still don't agree, but we've had discussions, and they've made suggestions on how to make this, this, this bill better. And so it's, it, it's been a gal that used to be the legislative council, senior legislative council, and she's just done an amazing job with her contacts in the legislature. And we would have never gotten anywhere near this without her. But we did lay a lot, a lot of groundwork. We spent a lot of time. We had a lot of legislators visit us out here over the last six, seven months so that they had a little bit better understanding. We would love to get this through this session, but in reality, it's probably gonna take more. Now, I'm not, that's, that's unheard of me optimist. And I do talk to the developers and, and people that, that would like to, to make this community our home, their home. And, and the number one question used to be water. The number one question now is, is power. Anyway, any questions at all?
Mr. Lynn?
Glad to have you here, Commissioner Doran. One question that I have is the, you were saying about the electricity that we have now, we're only getting 30% of what we produce?
Absolutely. It's produced in Umatilla We, we, less than 30% of that stays in Umatilla County.
Is it contracted out to other states? I don't understand why, if it is, why it can't be changed?
Counselor Lynton, it, it's extremely complicated. Even a dumb farm boy like me has a hard time understanding it. Power gets wield. It, it's bought and sold on a continuous basis. Those big transmission lines that you see from here to Portland, that's, that's the hungry beast that is, is taking our, the power generated here. But it also allows open-market purchase of power. Now, you got Nate sitting over The, the reality is, purchase, distribution, and transmission of power is complicated. But we don't, we don't retain the power that we generate here. We have nowhere to store it. I mean, it's not like we can put it in a silo like we store wheat and then take it out in the winter. We don't have that opportunity with power.
Okay. Will this be privately owned if it's built?
We don't know who the operator is, just for comparison's sake. In Richland, the operator is Energy Northwest. Also in, in the process of going through the permitting and siting of four SMRs there. They'll start with one. But that power, again, is gonna be carbon-free power and premium power for the grid. But if everything goes perfect, those first SMRs in Richland would come online in 2032. And so they, and they're, they're miles ahead of us as far as siting processes and those type of things. Plus, they have those people onboard. For all I know, Energy Northwest could end up being the oper Lynton, is because we have that skill set, that workforce skill set within 40 miles to be miles ahead of any place else in the state. That's another reason why the demonstration project is centered in Umatilla County. We have that skill set that can be drawn on. So as far as labor, engineering, and professional. Great question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Counsel?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank you, Commissioner Doran, for spearheading this, this effort. I think this is long overdue in Oregon, and I'm very excited to see it. And I think maybe what's driving is there's, for those who don't know, are much more power-hungry than the traditional data center has been. So I think this is perfect and a great opportunity for Oregon to move forward. Is it true that the only SMR-approved design in the United States is from a company in Tigard?
From Corvallis.
Okay, New Scale.
Councilman Kelso, yeah. It would, that, that's New Scale. Jose Reyes, Josie Reyes, Oregon State grad, developed the first SMR. They're not the only one that's permitted now. There's several that, that have gone through that with different types of, of fuel. Size of pool balls, and then they stack them up, and they, kind of like a popcorn machine pops up, and then they come back down, they come. And in some, some cases, there's actually, that haven't been permitted yet, but there's also processes of recycling light-water spent rod for, for fuel in, in different forms. It's, it's, it's intriguing. It's, it's fun to, fun to stay on the research trail of this because it is exciting. But in reality, the and so all the years of nuclear subs, light-water reactors, there still hasn't been an injury from any of the nuclear.
Any other questions? Okay, so what do you need from us?
I, I would love to get support of the council to keep moving forward with this HB 2410 and ask that, place your logo, the city of Hermiston logo on our logo letter to be introduced as testimony.
I'd like to make a motion that we do just that.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt? If, if you're watching your email, you'll, you should see a comment that came in online from a resident expressing some concern about this.
There, there is
We haven't had our, we haven't had a policy to read those out loud, but we have sent it all to all of you, and so you can, it will be part of the record. You can review that before. And the reason I ask for, I mean, sometimes we, we will put our support behind a bill that really just makes a lot of sense for the city, but because of the, kind of the controversial potential on supporting this
And I, and I'm not here to sugarcoat it. There, there are pockets of opposition, without a doubt.
Can you give us, sir, like, maybe like one example of opposition?
The number-one opposition that we hear is the relationship back to Hanford and the Hanford waste. Number two is there's not a permanent repository like Sweden has, an underground repository like Sweden has, and that the federal government hasn't designated cask storage as permanent. It's still permanent interim. Throwing out things like high cost and how it relates back to, to consumers, but those can be addressed and through, through presentations on the economics and, and the expenditures. Those are the, really the three biggest areas of opposition. And then there's, there's the inherent opposition to nuclear period. And that's, that, that one, I sit down and, and have those discussions and ask, what can we do to make this bill better for, for your opposition? And it's just position. But it's amazing how the youth, or the younger folks, understand nuclear much better than I do. It is a way, I mean, to a lot of them, they assume it's the way of life. Right now, it's 20% of the power that's generated in the US, and it's 50% of our carbon-free power in the and it's 50% of our carbon-free power in the U.S.
Mr. Mayor, also, we're a member of a group called the Oregon Municipal Electric Utilities. Is that right? And I'm going to just ask Nate to share their position and what they've been doing as related to the bill.
Oh, me too. So, it's all the Oregon Municipal Utilities come together, having an organization that represents municipal electric utilities. We provide a testimony in support of SMR technology, the concept, the work, the investment in time going into it. But at this time, we're still in a watch phase because, like Dan talked about, the language is still being developed. And what comes out of that language and those discussions to get this moving forward. But we support the SMR technology 100%, but we're still waiting for the final which comes out of the conversations.
Might it, might it be in our best interest to possibly take a look at technically both sides of the, of the argument, both, both, both views before we put a motion forward? Just to do, just for due diligence.
I, I'm not here to ask for opposition, but I, I think it's probably, I, I would not be, I, I think that would be a good move. I do. I, we, we do have a little bit of time. Not only has this bill made it through two public hearings, it's still alive and it it, it is still moving, which, again, is a miracle in itself. So, but it, whatever position you guys, the council and mayor would like, and if you need additional supporting information, I, I can supply whatever you need.
Right, we have a motion.
We did have a motion on the floor. So then you had a motion to do what?
To write a letter of support in, in support of HB 2410.
Second that.
Okay. I have a motion and
No.
Yes.
Motion passes three to two with Councilor Roberts and Councilor Linton in abstention.
Opposition.
Opposition.
I, I can't thank you guys enough. Great questions from everybody. I, I really appreciate that. And again, any questions at all that you guys may have, please feel free to reach out.
I got one thing. Can you please keep us updated?
Absolutely, absolutely. In fact, I had to step out because of the, the negotiation with the tribes on the, on the wording, on where we're trying to get.
The no vote was not opposition. It's because we're three counselors down, and I want them to be able to weigh in on this. I've been following this since I first heard you talk about SMR. I've gone deep down the rabbit hole on this. So, everything you're telling me, I'm, I'm already, you know, in on. So, it is a very good technology. I look forward to hearing more about that, so.
Absolutely. If you guys have me back, I'll, I'll.
I'm truly surprised that Morrow County hasn't tried to use the old coal fire plant area since most of the infrastructure should be there.
Not to take up much time, but I'd made a presentation to Morrow County last week. Their, their logo will be on the new page. But there's, the federal government combination of federal, private, and research, including INL, on how to map where nuclear SMRs can be located, light water reactors can be located. And what, what's amazing is you can't just put them anywhere. The soil conditions, population conditions, a lot of different things. Yumitila County has a lot of spots that it, that are green on the map. The greenest, the number one spot in Oregon is the old.
All right, well, I appreciate your, your come-ins and telling us this, and we do look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner Doran, can you give me, I need more information because I barely passed science. So, so can you tell me? So, can you tell me where I can go and look up some of this information and read more about it?
I, I can send you links.
Okay.
I can do that for sure, Councilor Linton. But if you go to INEL or GAIN, G-A-I-N, or the Energy. Is that right? No.
Why don't you send, why don't you send me some links and I can get it to all of them?
I can do that.
Even those who aren't here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. February 2025 Monthly Financial Report.
Mr. Placios.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'll be presenting the financial reports for 20, February 2024, 2025. Oops. Pardon my typo up there. I want it to be a year earlier, apparently.
Yeah, we kind of prefer to see this month's, a year later.
So, I'm pleased to coming on track for the budget to actual for revenues and expenditures. The only comment I have is on the Hermiston Urban Renewal, North Hermiston Urban Renewal area. The project has been delayed due to signal analysis and right-of-way acquisition. We still anticipate going out to bid in April. Did I do that? I did? Okay. As I pointed out, we are in the eighth month of our fiscal year, about 67% through, through, through the budget cycle. These are meeting expectation at 67 in round numbers. So, and that, so with property taxes annualized. Monthly expenditures, I'm very pleased to report this, are under projections by 1.3 million. Although five departments are over budget when compared to projected, all departments are meeting or below expected expenditures through the end of February 2025. Special revenue funds, I reported on this last month. We had, there's an anticipation that there would be a match, a partial match for the Bourne project, and that's in round numbers about $104,000 this in 2024 for these projects that included PD, library, and the Bourne project. So, we should be able to make that transfer before the end of the fiscal year or right after to cover that. Utility and street funds, again, I'm pleased to report that were about 655,000 over projected revenues, although this corresponds to a one-time septic revenue and recycled water for some Amazon septic cleaning that we did for them. And that's, that's my report for this evening. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Smith, and they'll do the CIP portion.
First, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, just a few updates on some of the projects we have moving along. Gear &amp; Harper, I was pleased to hear that we heard back from Union Pacific on our designs. So, finalizing just a couple of items there. So, anticipating full design work this fall, heading into construction next calendar year. North First Sidewalk, discussion continues with the railroad on right-of-way acquisition there. Regional Water System backup generators, continuing to proceed with the design on that project. That's going to be a long project when we get to actually ordering the generators, several years out. Well, number six before you to award a contract here, probably about late May or June timeframe. Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project, we just had our pre-construction meeting this afternoon. So, they're going to be onsite, beginning drilling probably late April, so about a month away. And then the Well Four Controls Project, you just awarded that contract this evening. Up at the, and then just the one thing I have on here for the Hanger project up at the airport, the foundation work has started, and we anticipate to go vertical here in the next coming months.
And almost complete. We're planning a tour for our next council meeting during the work session time. So, we'll be walking through, getting a chance to take a look at that. With the ARC, when we were out on a tour this morning with Councilor Roberts and Brandon, they were prepping for painting on that, on the ARC building. So, that's the final step as far as all the construction projects that we had planned there. The Public Safety Center, the chief and I walked through last week. Interior framing on the upper floor is pretty much complete, I think they said. And they'll be starting, they're, they're still doing some on the, on the bottom side and working kind of on the, a lot of that work will be done on the fire side, but there'll be some framing and work on, on the police side as well. And then the Sally Port, the, all of the, the footings are in place, and they'll be starting to put the construction going out of the ground as they go forward. So, with those, I think we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question on page six, I think it is, where it says, I'll give you a second to cut. Go there on the
Okay.
Legal. And so, I was wondering what that, what's all about. Is that?
Well, it's, so what that column is, is the percentage of, that it's over or under budget, and it's a little bit, it's $209 overspent.
Correct, when compared to projection, and that's
Projections.
Yeah. So, but when based against the actual, budget to actual through that period, it's less than that. Also, the zero, the reason it's, it's 0% is because it's less than 0%. I mean, less than 1%. So, this is rounded up to the nearest one.
Is this like buying the material?
All of the costs for myself, Mr. Morgan, city attorney, Lilly, and our HR staff, all of that personnel costs, as well as any travel or other, and then any office supplies that we might buy, that basically that's in the bud, that portion of the budget.
Has a prosecuting attorney been hired yet?
We, we have a prosecutor. Our, our challenge right now is we did just receive a resignation from our defense attorney. And so, we're out looking for a public defense attorney right now.
Okay, thank you.
Monthly Financial Report. Public Comment Financial Report. Seeing none. Council Comments on the financial report. Seeing none. Can I get a motion to accept the February 2025 Monthly Financial Report as presented?
So, moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor McCarthy, seconded by Councilor Roberts. Roll call.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right, City Committee reports, or City Hayward.
I have one from I Love My City. Last update I got from them, from attending a meeting that they had with all the churches and every business that was involved, it sounds like there's going to be overwhelming support from the community. And it looks like there's more churches, more businesses that are joining this than the previous year. So, it looks like it might be a lot bigger for the city.
Council McCarthy.
We had our first meeting for the Recreation Projects Fund, where we talked about just rules and guidelines for the upcoming application process, which will be happening here this year. And I think presentation day is June, in June.
Councilor Kelso.
What is the deadline to file an application? Thank you.
Any other council committee or liaison report?
I also have a
Okay.
Sorry. The Hermis, the Hispanic Advisory Committee met on March 17th, and we had a presentation from Family Health Associates, who provided information about immigration physicals for people who are going through the immigration process. It was very enlightening. We also had a representative from Wafed Bank talking about how they're willing to serve all of their clients, regardless of their status, and some of the work that they're doing for our Hispanic community, which I thought was, was very good. So, selected goals. Some goals, have a Hispanic Heritage Month event, prepare for Cinco de Mayo, and be represented at different festivals throughout the year, which I thought was exciting. Also exciting is that we have four or five, I'm not sure, applications for, five, thank you, Lilly, for the two open spots on that committee, which those spots have been historically difficult to fill. So, I'm excited about that as well.
I believe we have a meetings coming, or interviews coming up for those. So, excellent. Any other council committees or liaison reports? Okay. Forward my congratulations to those at the Distinguished Service Awards that received the different awards. Very well, very well attended, very well received, and I cannot agree more with all, any of their choices. It was a very nice, nice deal, even though I had to talk. So, um
Like music.
We're going to leave the music alone because this is an open council session. And that, as they say, is that, sir. Just as a reminder, got the Civic Leadership Academy coming up. Good opportunity to become involved in the community and learn how to do the thing, as it were. Lots of, lots of good information. It's a good project. I can't stress it enough. My, a couple of things that I've, I've found that we have coming up in the future also. We have the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway at the Community Center on the 5th of next month at the Community Center parking lot. And also, in, in the general area, we have the Casting Catch Fishing Day down at the McNary Ponds in Yumitila from 10 to 2 on the very same day. A deal to remember for. So, I'm going to pass it off to the council president.
I got nothing to say.
Ha! Yay.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, council reports. Council reports. Anybody got something? Council Roberts.
I just briefly want to thank Brandon. As Mr. Smith said, they gave me a tour of the parks today, and I wanted to just publicly say how impressed I am and that the work that the Parks Department's doing. We went around to each park in the city, and it dawned on me that when you show up there, the grass is cut, the kids are playing, things are working, but the staff, and, and I just really think they're doing an amazing job, so thank you.
Councilor Linton?
I just want to bring up about during our goal setting, we talked about Chambers and Park and Rider, and I was just wondering when we can put that on our agenda for discussion.
We, we will, I haven't got a plan yet, but next, next I haven't got a plan yet, but next, next meeting might work out well for us to talk a little bit about in preparation for our budget. What are, what we will present as the staff, so.
Thank you.
Wanted to thank Liz Marvin and her hardy team of volunteers for putting on the distinguished service awards banquet. That's, I think in my book, one of the most fun events of the year, getting to see everybody at the community center, so. It was a great time and I wanted to thank her by name and her group of volunteers. The mayor has asked us to go out and visit other city councils, so I've done just that. In the past couple of weeks, I visited on the 11th, the City of Echo's city council meeting, and that was quite interesting to see how they do it, it's a bit less formal. But they do have pretty substantive topics that they discuss. In fact, they had a three to three tie vote that the mayor got to That was interesting to see. That meeting also made me thankful for our consent agenda that we have here. Shortens our meeting by quite a bit, and so I think that was good to see. I also went to the City of Irrigan City Council Meeting on the 18th, and similarly somewhat less formal, and just a well-run meeting overall, and it was great to meet those folks, and I highly encourage other council members to do the same.
I have a list of
Okay. See. Well, Counsel Hayward, you're the only one that hasn't said anything, so.
All I have is for the Source Award winners, congratulate it was a total surprise to me, and by what I heard from her, she didn't know about it until they came to her. It was a great dinner, first time going, everything was great, I got nothing but good things to say.
All right. Youth Advisory Report. Ms. Harita. What you got for us?
Um, you know, I think we're just all trying to make it a spring break right now.
Really? Well.
Working on some stuff with the club, so hopefully we get that done before I graduate, and there are a couple of events at the high school going on, we do have a track sports events and spring sports are like starting and starting to get going, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just a few items to remind you, we have a city chat coming up April 9th. So if you can let Lilly know if you're intending to come, some of you already have, so just wanted to remind her. I always wanted to, also wanted to remind about the Leadership Academy application deadline. Then just a committee opening that we just received today, Patrick Collins, who's been a member of our ETEC Advisory Committee coming up. And then I would encourage you to go take a look at the pickleball courts. I hadn't seen that, but today when we went out and looked at that, it's really starting to shape up. They've got fence poles up, you can kind of see the scope of the project, it's going to be great, so go take a look at it if you can.
Yes.
That's theater sports park.
Yeah, Phil, Phil Haim put, put the arm on me at the DSA
Yeah.
telling me just that, that we needed to get over there and take a look at it.
Yeah, he, he's still pushing me to have a council tour and I'll just, when we get to the point of cutting the ribbon, we'll do that, so.
Okay. All right. Okay, executive recess, we're going to recess for executive session. The Hermiston City, the City Council of the City of Hermiston will now meet in executive session in the executive session room for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to negotiating, negotiating real property transactions and discussing matters pertaining to litigation with legal counsel. Executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602ENH, which allows the council to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the council to negotiate real property transactions litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session, which the audience may attend. Executive session will last approximately 15 minutes.
Okay, we got everybody back. All right.